It's seven o'clock. So our first order of business tonight is the minutes from March 13. Do we have a motion on those minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. So our first case tonight is 385, 393 Pleasant Street.
Do we need to approve the minutes?
What?
We just did.
We just did. Oh, that's what that was. I was calling for it.
You just voted for it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. D'Artagnan Brown, architect from Embark. Thanks for having us tonight. So we're here for an amendment to the special permit. We're looking to actually make a reduction in the height of one of our buildings, which we'll walk through. So Building A and B to the right of the screen, that's staying as is. That's in construction now, almost done with Building B in terms of putting the roof on the top. Building F, all the way to the left, we're looking to go from five-story building to a four-story building. This would take the height from 54 down to 50 and decrease the living by about 2,750 square feet. And part of that reduction in height would be taking two of the units and relocating them to Building E. Building E, by reworking some of the floor plans, it's a very minimal infill corner on the top floor of 123 square feet. And working with Gideon, one thing we've changed is instead of having the cladding over the concrete foundation, we're actually looking to do a more detailed wood slat system, which we'll show you. High level here, just by orientation, all of these drawings, the top will be as permitted from the approved setback in May. And the lower diagram is the proposed amendment. One thing we've done is enlarged the bike room. If you can see the mouse on any of these, yeah. Enlarged the bike room, and we have just a door off of the parking area, so that better enhances the landscape in front of that, which I'll show you. Sorry, in the middle here, we're going to preserve the concrete stairs that come up into the building, which I'll show you in elevation. We've added one extra door along for a second means of egress. And then on Building E, up towards the parking lot here, we've added one extra lobby door. So if you were coming from the parking lot, you don't have to walk all the way around. You can have a more direct access into the building. In terms of elevation, so Building-
So take your time, because there's a lot going on here, so-
Oh, sure.
Don't rush us through it. Okay.
Okay. So, thank you. So in terms of elevation, along Building F, so the upper left on that sheet was what was approved with the additional story. What we've done is decreased again the height, decreased the units from 12 to 10, which has reduced about 2,750 square feet from that. We'll show you a floor plan shift that we worked through with Gideon in terms of moving the units to the front. We think will help activate that facade. And then Building E, in this upper-left corner, you can see that's the one corner we infilled to get part of the unit shift to work. And then along the base of the building, where I'm running the mouse, if you can see that, this is where we had the fiber cement panel over the existing concrete foundation, where we're looking to go to a wood slat detail. In terms of Building F, so this is kind of just showing we're still all within the allowable height setback, probably line. We're just really reducing the overall height by the four feet. We still maintain 14-foot, 14-foot, 1-inch for the trash, as we had described earlier. If you remember being able to get all of that to circulate along the back of the site.
Could you pause on that for a second?
Sure.
Because I'm just curious, if you'd run through the numbers on how you took away a floor but only reduced the height by four feet?
Correct.
Does the other one, someplace else, just explain that if you would?
Yeah, go ahead, June.
It was a very short floor.
Hi, I'm Cindy Lee from Embark. So we took out the entire floor in Building F, which includes not only the corridor, the two units, but the corridor and two sets of stairs. We already have the egress stair and the corridor access in Building E. We also made those, even though we have those units, those are smaller units in Building E.
Could you explain the height? That was my question.
Oh, we, the first floor has to be greater than what we were before. And we add a little bit more to each of the units so that they're not at like just eight-feet ceiling. Because before, as it was permitted in the control, they would have been just were like squatching eight feet.
So go through the numbers, please. You took a floor away of X square feet, you added Y square feet to each level. You maintain Z square feet on the first floor, whatever the-
So overall, we're down four feet.
Right, I got that.
The floor would have been 10 feet. So the six feet, two feet, six feet, two feet would have been to the first floor.
Say that again, I couldn't hear with a commotion there.
Okay, I'll start over. Overall, we're down four feet.
Yeah.
So the six-foot delta and the regular 10-foot floor-to-floor, which we had, we added a foot, I believe it's a foot four, to the upper floors to get to a nine-foot ceiling.
Split between them?
Correct. Between the three, the three floors there. And then the balance was at the first floor, so we can clean up. And if you can see a section here, we kind of had a jogged condition to get the traffic aisle to work. We've cleaned that up by raising this up, the delta of that three feet. So we have a clean underpass, that's good, a clean underpass at the back.
Okay. So if I can just, so your floor-to-floors used to be 10 feet or-
They used to be 10 foot seven. Yeah, 10 foot seven. Now we have 11 six. And then the main difference is at the base, we had 11 foot two, and now we're the 16 to get that 14 foot.
So the bulk of it went to that sort of pass-through breezeway kind of thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So in terms of elevations, again, the upper left is where we were at with the four over the one. And now we're the three over the one. So you can see the dash red line is where we've dropped the height, the four feet. And same thing on the rear. So on the rear, we've cleaned up that bump. So now we have a single continuous underpassage for the access. In terms of the units, so this is what we worked through with Gideon. Before, at the front, we had a hallway that connected the two stairs and the elevator. In kind of flushing through the plans and working on this with Gideon, we've been able to actually get the hallway to the back, maintaining the same egress, but activating that front facade with the unit itself rather than a hallway. In terms of perspectives, so this again is what we had back in May. So the center section here would have been the hallways to those units. And now it's kind of a hybrid between art drawing and the artist's drawing, but just in terms of our computer getting in, that's the actual unit now in lieu of the hallway from before. Same exact material, same windows, it's just we've been able to activate it with unit rather than hall. And then you can see here subtly at the base here of Building E, where we had all of the fiber cement panel along the middle here. We're now doing a wood slat screening and preserving the brick that's on the first portion of the building. And I'll show, I have a little bit more detail on that. So that's this section here. So again, you can see that was fully clad and approved setback in May. And now what we're proposing for half of the building is a wood screening detail. And then on the second half, where we have the commercial space to keep the existing brick. So this is the portion here where we have the concrete. So that would be clad. This is the proposed detail for a wood slat over the concrete. So it'd be off of a spacer. It'd be a fin-like detail across that entire length. These are the stairs that we're looking to preserve to connect back up. And then we'd switch back to the brick for the remaining portion of the building that's existing now. High-level overview, we just did a summary, so it's very clear on the changes. The use, there's no change there. Dwelling units has remained the same. Lot size has not changed. The front, rear, and side yard setbacks have not changed. The building coverage has not changed. The impervious lot coverage has not changed. The height, again, from Building E has gone down, the four-and-a-half feet roughly, from five stories to four stories. Everything else has remained. Lot area per dwelling unit, again, same number of units, so that hasn't changed. The gross floor area, we are down that 2,700. And then that, in effect, has dropped the FAR. So we've gone from a .92 to a .88. And that has broken out to a reduction in the residential from .78 to .75, and the commercial from .14 to .13. Our open space hasn't changed, and our parking counts have not changed. And then I think lastly, just questions, as we flush through the details of the landscape to make sure we have ample screening. So this, we've just submitted to make, I mentioned we were able to get rid of an extra stair up to the bike room, since that allowed us to enlarge the bike room with access off of the drive aisle. And so we have a nice continuous planting bed, street trees, and screening to the parking, a lot of which was there before, but we've been able to supplement as we made those revisions. And that is it.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a staff report.
Yes. I can give you a staff report. So we originally received the plans and discussed the process with the applicant about the, you know, the change in the height and the change in the floor plans. We deemed that it required a board review and approval. In looking at the floor plans, we noted that the common interior walkways were on the, were on the south side, facing the street, and the units were facing north. So we, Steve McGoon and I met with them, and we discussed scenarios where they might be able to flip those so that there would be less direct lighting towards the north. And so they looked at those options. We discussed some scenarios with them about the windows and windows within the stairwells. And so they came up with this plan with the facade being changed so that has the activated side facing the street rather than facing the north, which we felt was, if anything, a less impactful layout. And staff looked at the minor changes, requested the analysis of the zoning, and felt that this was a minor amendment. There were some changes to the center building during the process, which removed a commercial area on the first floor. So their original plan, when we first reviewed it at the staff level, had a continuous frontage along the street there. When they, through the process, they got rid of a building, which made it so it was both infeasible and also not required to have that much commercial. And so they reverted back to maintaining the concrete foundation. During the initial reviews with both Gamble Associates and staff, we felt that, you know, keeping the brick and the original materials there makes more sense than cladding it with something like a hardy panel. And so we felt that these components of that change were minor in nature, and that would be appropriate to use a natural material, which is something that was within our design guidelines. The notch on the fourth floor of the middle building, which you didn't describe too much, but there is basically a one-unit notch to the left. And staff didn't, that was not put there for any kind of a design or staff requirement. I think it was just something that they had added, maybe to have a deck there at the time. I'm not sure. And so the changing of the number of units on the one site and moving one to that site and having it there, and then having the rest be integrated into that center building, we felt was also minor. Andrea Adams looked at it from an affordable housing layout, and none of those units were materially changed or affected by this change. So altogether, staff felt that this was an appropriate change to the approved project. And, oh, and in particular, I think the drive aisle in the rear was what had, they designed this through a hearing process where they got rid of a second floor that they had, which was a full width floor during the process. And so when they were running the numbers and looking at those, there were some issues with the stairwell hanging into that drive aisle still. And the reality is that a 14-foot drive aisle is what we would require within our zoning ordinance for loading areas. And so that would be an appropriate height. And from that perspective, staff felt that it was better to allow a change from a taller building to a shorter building, even if it's only four feet of change, that that is a, in this neighborhood is a less impactful change. So with that, staff recommended approval of the requested changes to the layout. And we requested some confirmations of the screening of the parking areas and other pieces from a landscaping perspective. So they provided that as well. And we feel that the layout, it's not often that you get to relook at things, especially after it's about, it's halfway being constructed. So it is a, you know, interesting scenario. So with that, staff recommended a conditional approval of the request for an amendment to the approved control plans and approval. I'm here for questions. Thank you.
So did we all just miss the 14-foot clearance before?
They, they actually had a 18?
18 foot.
An 18-foot clearance in order, because during the process, they just determined that they needed to have that, the request was to make sure that that drive aisle was satisfactory. So they just took the second floor off and came up with a reduced number of units at the time. But it still had an issue with the code requirements for the stairwell that they missed during that board review. I think when they were doing their building permit process, they discovered that issue. And 18 feet honestly was much taller than it needed to be from a staff perspective. That was just because of the configuration of the first and second floor. A taller first floor often, I think, makes more sense. But they were going, they had a different building that they were removing pieces of rather than designing from the start on it, so.
Thank you. So are there board member questions here?
I have a couple of questions. Thanks. Well, first, the comment, I think I prefer the new elevations for Pleasant Street. I think I like the window penetration details, you know, seems to be a little bit more hashed out. I do have, the two questions I have are actually specifically about that first floor of Building E. Because I'm looking at the before and the after, and you have in the control set from last month, I'm sorry, from May 18th of 2018, there's like two doors with little canopies over them. And then in the new version, I don't see those anymore. So, and I look, when I look at the plan, it says "commercial" over here. I guess I just want to understand what's going on, where those doors used to go, and what the new intent is for that space.
So originally, when we were, last year, we had presumed that we can drop the slab at the base. But since then, we've done test pits, and we've dug, we found where the foundations are. And we decided that we would keep the slab where it is.
The slab on grade, the lowest level slab?
Yeah, that's existing there now. So right at this line here?
Yeah.
There is an existing slab, and due to structural issues, to take that out-
Oh.
And put in new building. So we have one of the doors here, and then the main entry would still be through that main commercial connection, which is that glass.
Okay. So basically, you used to be able to enter, you thought you'd be able to enter off the sidewalk?
You thought we'd pull it, and post exploration?
Yeah.
We can.
Okay. So you take that little stairway over towards the middle of the building, up a little bit, get into the commercial space?
Correct. And then main entry would be through that, which is the same connector we have-
Yeah.
In the middle.
Okay, that makes sense. It's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a couple of quick ones. Just curious why the windows in the stairwells were eliminated? Those are the spaces that people will hopefully use rather than the elevator. So windowless stairs, kind of like a fire stair, not such a nice experience.
Same for fire rating? I'm going to ask them about the detail. I came to give the overview.
You can say cost, if that's it.
No, I think it's cost and fire rating, fire rating in the stair-
I mean, it's not, it's not a very nice stairwell when you take all the windows out, so.
Building is required is to put in fire-rated glass if we have it in the stairwell. And we would have to also put a signage so that in case the firemen comes and break through the window, they know that they're in a shaft condition. A big sign.
So even though the distance to another building is at right angle, they were concerned about that being rated glass? Everybody looks at things differently. I think that was it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions. I actually do agree with my colleagues. I think it's an improvement. And my hope is that, I think it's a great idea to do the wood grill where that mess is right now. It's a south-facing elevation with landscaping. I'm hoping that maybe that could be developed into something, kind of a green wall and a nice feature.
To grow up on it, like a trellis.
Right, exactly. But otherwise, I think it's definitely an improvement.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I would echo the same thing. I think lowering Building F does make for a more uniform height, and it kind of blends with topography a lot better. My one question, just a bigger picture question, just to step back, is what's driving the request? Why, you know, a year later, you're coming back and saying, "Why are we here?" Is my question.
Keep things exciting. I think it's just a- Yeah, work through the seat isn't the cost of getting that five-story to work.
Yeah.
Just, it made sense to see if we could come back and cut the height down.
Yeah. The other question, last question I have is just, on the first page of the plans, looking at the bike parking, where the bicycle, you said you were enlarging the bicycle parking room, but if I'm reading this correctly, the actual number of bike parking spaces is going down by 14. So I was just questioning, I was just wondering, what was the reasoning behind that? And is that a problem, Gideon, from a staff perspective?
So we were over, that's why we wanted to have more bike parking, instead of paying for some-
So the actual bike room itself isn't changing count, it's the overall site. So we're required to have 18.
Right.
We're providing 32.
Yeah.
And we had 46.
Right, I was just wondering why the big drop, so.
Well, in each of the entrances, we have some bike spaces, but we chose to have more landscaping because we have so many entrances.
Oh, along Building A, B, yeah. So if you can see, like Building A, B, it has two. So each of those had some.
Okay.
Working through the landscaping, we took those out. So the Building F hasn't changed.
I understand, okay.
But we're still double-
Yeah, double the requirement, exactly.
So I just have a question about the brick. The big building is, E, is loaded with brick. Is the new building going to match that, or how are you going to do that?
In terms of the palette? Let me just go to the-
Yeah. I mean, you can draw it and make it look the same, but, I mean, is it the same brick? Is it, are you able to figure out what that brick is?
We think it has to match.
I mean, luckily, they don't exactly join, so.
Right.
Yeah. My other question, I've-
We'll have to get enough to patch E anyway.
Because I think that'd be important in this. My other question is really irrelevant to what's going on here tonight, but I have to say, I've always been dubious about this project because there is no green space in there. So kids are coming out of the house, and they're on asphalt. So what do you, what do families do? What do you, how do you address that question? There isn't a playground on the spot, on the site.
On the spot, I would leave it to them.
Up on the upper left.
Yeah. But we have throughout AMB, this is a 15 feet setback on level one.
Yeah, so beyond the park, park.
Just in the front, is?
Yeah, along the front. And then, I guess that's part of also moving the bike racks, is we've just increased the landscape along the front of the building.
All right, I mean, it's, it's not the subject you're here for tonight, but it's the only building in town that you drive under, I think. Interesting thought. So, are there questions in the audience on this project?
Brian Waincoop from Rosedale Road, could you pull up the colored picture from across the street?
Let me know which one.
That one. So, just really a question, this is what I'll call the old one?
Yeah.
And it's two solid of black lines here. You go to the new one, why is those like solid black now? What changed there?
Oh, because this is enhanced sketch to a computer rendering.
Are you addressing us, or are you addressing each other? What's going on?
I'll tell you my question, so on the original drawing right here, on, on the line between the brick top and bottom of the white on here, it's just kind of like, I don't know, a general line?
Yeah.
And when you go to the new one, it's like solid black.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering what that is? I don't, you know, is that like some new railing? Because there's...
No, we had railings, we had railings before. I think the difference is it's a plastic rendering versus we're now in construction drawings, and this is coming from a...
More detailed?
A computer model.
Okay.
It is a rail.
Oh, yeah.
It is a rail, it's hard to read if that's fair.
But far, when you, when you're drawing in three D and you're, you're like seeing every pecket, when in reality, it starts with dense, it's just computer software.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
And my other comment, I guess, or potential recommendation is, so this applicant is coming to the town a year later, obviously, they had some concerns and changes they wanted to make. Well, we as a community, a year later, have also realized that we're very short in funding in the TDM program. And so if, a suggestion I would make is if they're coming back for financial reasons that they need to change their drawings, potentially, there should be, could be a recommendation of some kind of additional donation to the town for the TDM program that is very lacking in funding, that will be serving this building and money others on Pleasant Street. So I'm curious if that could be a condition of this approval.
They're, they're one of the projects...
I'll take it from you, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that they, they're committed to being, providing a proportional share, which is the reasonable amount that can be asked for, unless they would like to volunteer something differently. They've, they've already committed to being part of the transportation demand, I mean, he said TDM, but the Transportation Management Association, and committing to a proportionate share if and when we can have a shuttle along the Pleasant Street corridor. So, so they are one of the projects that was approved after our TDM ordinance, and they've had a TDM plan reviewed and approved through our department.
So this change won't change that?
No, that, as you saw, the actual facts of the proposal are exactly the same, and none of our rules or requirements have changed since the original request.
I could add a comment, I think it might be appropriate to ask that if they were coming for more height, more GFA, more units, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, technically, they don't need any of this. They've been approved with the original drawings, so I would state, in fact, they need something from the town to make their project work better. The town has since learned that the town needs something more from these projects. So in my opinion, personally, this is a perfect opportunity to actually ask for something additional, because they're asking the town for something additional. But I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, though, the way that the language was written was not an X amount of dollars, it was a proportionate share for a commitment. But whatever ends up happening along the Pleasant Street corridor has to be a financially viable scenario for it to actually work. We, we can't force the projects to create something that fails, and so it's been something that the town's been working on, but it's, but the language is built in so that it is a, it's a, it's a moving target depending on what the corridor can, can handle. So it's, so it's part of a, you know, it's a very complex scenario with this Transportation Management Association, the Watertown Transportation Management Association, which was created because of the approvals that we've required TDM and the TMA of. So this project and other projects along this corridor have, have helped create the actual nonprofit Transportation Management Association for Watertown, and they are now looking at scenarios for making different types of shuttle systems work, looking at the Pleasant Street and Arsenal Street corridor.
I mean, I understand the implementation is not going quite as well as some might have hoped.
Right, it, 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 partially, it's a lot of projects have not, are not up and running yet, so they, you, you can't make, you can't make something work when there's nothing there, and so we, we hope that that is part of it, but it, it is a, there, there's a reason there's not a bus along the Pleasant Street corridor, it is a, it's a complex area to serve, but we're looking for, you know, best-case scenarios and continue to work on that.
So, Gideon, if, if everybody is obligated to some proportionate share, what, what is it a share of? How is the total number determined? What it takes to run the service? And then it's divided up on a per rata basis by the, the entities that are supporting it?
So, so the TMA is doing the, they've done some surveys, I, I mean, this is a conversation that's outside of this hearing, so I don't want to get, I, I would, I would love to talk to you more about that. I, I'm also not the one most involved with this, so if you, if you're interested in that, I would encourage you to reach out to our transportation planner and talk about, you know, what we are working on along the corridor with the TMA and as the town, both here and along the Arsenal Street corridor. There's a lot of different factors that are, come into play with how you create both the TMA and the, and if, if we...
My question was a simpler one, I think, than you're imagining. I'm just wondering if everybody's sharing whatever the cost is on a per rata basis, then that means this developer will be sharing on a per rata basis once the cost has been developed.
Once it's been determined, yes.
So we can talk about it separately? I, I am curious to know a little bit more than that.
So, no other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Uh, yes, my name is Mary Santoro, and our family home is off of Franklin Street, and I must admit, this is the first time that I'm looking at this. And I just wanted to follow up on your comment, Mr. Brown, about green space. And I'm not quite sure that I heard the, the response, I'm not quite certain how much green space is going to be there or added, but what I did hear was that there is going to be a park in the front. That's my understanding from what I heard, I could be incorrect about that. And I just wanted to mention that if, in fact, this is for affordable housing, or are going to have a lot of children, having a park in the front is not exactly a safety, a safety thing, and there should be more green space. It seems to me that a lot of the buildings that are going up on Pleasant Street are buildings and buildings and nothing but buildings, I don't see too much green space, so that would be my comment. Thank you.
So, it's really not part of the subject matter tonight?
Just really briefly, just to, just speak to that very briefly, because it's been a long time. What they are contributing to is a safe pedestrian crossing that's actuated there, and then the other developer is providing a direct connection to the River Greenway, where there wasn't a safe connection before, so it's directly across the street, provides direct access to the entire DCR Greenway. So that is the green space in this corridor, and all of the plans that we've done over the years have acknowledged that it's a very industrial corridor, and it's, it's changing, but the desire and goal was to have the green space on the other side of Pleasant Street, and that's where, you know, so they're providing a key connection from Lotham Street and Rosedale Road to that area, so that there's a safe access for not just them, but for others in the community. So I just wanted to make sure that there was a reference to that.
So where on the, where, where will that be?
That's right here. So this is Rosedale coming down, so we have a connection down through here.
So there's a, there's a walkway there now. I was on it today.
Not, not really, no.
There's a...
Oh, it's just a little further down, isn't it?
Yeah. It's an informal, it's a parking lot that the town, it's complicated, but...
The present one is further down, that's right.
Yeah. So this is another connection that will be created as part of, you know, with the, there's no, currently, there's no pedestrian crossing on that side, so you have to take two legs, it's, so it'll be a direct, single crossing, more of a complete street and a safer situation. And so there, there isn't a lot of green space on the site, they are providing some, you know, that, that corner, and they're creating an easement so that the area is safer and easier to access for everybody, but, and, and it isn't part of this...
No.
Request tonight.
Let's find a talk.
Since you brought it up, I...
So, without further ado, do we have a motion?
So this is the planning board's decision, it's not going to the ZDA.
Yeah, planning board.
Okay, so I move that the planning board recommend a conditional approval of the requested amendment to PB 201705, as the request meets the necessary criteria set forth in the Watertown zoning ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, we're all set?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So our next order of business is 195 Mount Auburn Street. I mean, I didn't know about that connection, that's nice.
Yeah, I forgot, it's there, on the other side of the street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Brodigan, I'm the law firm of Brodigan and Gardner. I represent the petitioners, Lefjatis, his wife's Anne Gold. With me here tonight is Andy Rojas, Rojas Design, who's the architect on the project. This is a request for a special permit, and...
Close the door behind you.
Thank you. This is a request for a special permit to convert two existing commercial uses at the property to one residential unit. The property of Mount Auburn Street consists of, currently consists of one residential unit and three commercial spaces. The three commercial spaces consist of two vacant units right now, and one real estate company that's on the first floor level as well, and the second, in the upper levels are the residential apartment. The proposed use for the residential unit would be on the first floor and the basement area. And the, the, the idea would be for the, for the existing commercial spaces to, two of the, two of the three existing commercial spaces to go away and be replaced by a second residential unit at the property. All of the work, essentially, essentially all of the work will be done on the interior of the premises. There will be, I think it's seven windows that will be replaced to bring the property up to code. But there is an existing garage on the property as well that will remain. It will house four of the six parking spaces that will be utilized at the property. There would also be one shadow space that is shown near the top of the driveway that would not be constructed unless required, unless required to be constructed. But the idea would be to utilize the existing garage, the tandem spaces, and then use the two parking spaces at the top of the driveway for the real estate. Submit that this site is appropriate for this type of use, it's in a residential neighborhood, and there are a number of mixed-use commercial premises along the Mount Auburn corridor. And as developed, it would not adversely affect the neighborhood at all. In fact, what it would be, would be less impactful to the neighborhood than the commercial spaces would be, there'd be less traffic coming in and out of the driveway. By way of history, what had been allowed by the town was a, for this commercial space to be used, that, that is going to be converted to a residential, was going to be used as a Pilates studio. The residential unit would be in place of that, and I would submit to you that that by itself would be less impactful because there would be less traffic coming in and out of not only the driveway, but also the surrounding streets. As I mentioned, there could be adequate facility relative to parking, you have the existing garage, you have the, the driveway, and the reduction in the parking requirement from the conversion to the residential use would be roughly from around six spots required to about two for this particular use. So that would bring it to a total of seven spots, and as we said, we have six with the shadow space there as well. That's essentially it.
Okay. So have we a staff report, or do we do?
Sure. Thank you. The, as you know, you, this project, or not this, this site came to you last, what was that, two months ago? During the, during the review process, we determined that there was a, an issue with the relief sought, and therefore, they withdrew that request. So I, I know you've seen this site several times coming before the board, so I just wanted to make sure you understood that this, in, in this case, they're asking for a special permit in a single-family conversion zone to allow two units. They're taking what was a previously permitted, but not non-conforming use, the portion of the offices, and converting that into the second unit. So there would be a reduction of the amount of office space by removing those units, and that would be a single unit, and there would be the existing unit on the second and third floors. And so the, I just wanted to make sure we had the context that we're doing a special permit for the residential, the residential second unit, so there's an existing unit, and there'll be two, is what they're requesting, and the remnant of the office space would remain. The office space was originally permitted by Younger, Clyde Younger's business, to be used as office space, and there was a building permit pulled for an office space in the nineteen nineties, and that area, the realtors, currently being used by a realtor's office would, would remain. So staff looked at the special permit criteria for a two-unit residential, while look, considering that there's a history and that there's a existing commercial space that would remain, and recommends a conditional approval of the, of the proposed request. We also provided a background as far as the site is in the Mount Auburn Street Historic District, which has a mix of both larger Victorian-era former single-family homes used for a variety of mixed commercial and multifamily residential uses. The corridor also has a mix of apartment and condominium buildings, like the one that's directly adjacent to this house on the block, which had replaced other former Victorian houses. To the south of the house is a neighborhood of primarily residential structures with a mix of single, two-family, and multifamily uses as well. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure we had the context, I don't know if we went into that too much in the past. They are requesting what was 1,043 square feet and 1,013 square feet, which is a total of 2,056 square feet, to be converted into the second residential unit. So previously, that was office space, and it would be, become the second residential unit within the structure. Based on the calculations for the reduction of 2,056 square feet, there would be a change, see if I, trying to read my notes here, but I'm missing that one. The two residential units, maybe it's in a different section. Sorry about that, I thought, I was reading ahead, in my head, so, the two thousand... So, the 2,056 square feet of office configured as two units, see. As office, that space would require 5.9 parking spaces, assuming one space for 350 square feet of office. And as resident, as a residence, it would only require two spaces. So the actual conversion of this part of the building would reduce the zoning's requirements from almost six parking spaces to two spaces, a reduction of approximately four spaces. So I took that out of order. So it's four criteria for a special permit. The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The site and location is appropriate for the proposed conversion of the approximately 2,000 square feet, staff found, and that the existing, the remaining office, which was pulled through that building permit of 1,028 square feet in two areas with the shared common spaces continues, that would be used for the second-floor residential unit is appropriate as well, or would remain the same. The two units is allowed under the single-family conversion zoning district and was specifically intended for these larger, older homes that have a substantial amount of square footage. So staff felt that this is an appropriate location for the two units with the remnant commercial space to remain, commercial office. Number two, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Staff felt that this would be met with conditions. The conversion would be less impactful than the previous business use in this area of the structure. It's more in keeping with the Watertown zoning ordinance and the surrounding development patterns. Architectural changes would be under the control of the Historic District Commission because it's in the Historic District. So any changes to the exterior would require them to have a review and approval. So the changes to the windows, or changes to the door, and the changes to the basement windows would continue to be under their purview. You, you can make suggestions, but they, they are the ones who have to make the decision on that. The remaining commercial office space is fifty, is less than 50% of the first floor, and is a much smaller portion of the entire structure than the original funeral home or the subsequent use as office. And therefore, would decrease the commercial activity on the site substantially, all which would decrease the adversity in the neighborhood. Criteria number three, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians. Again, staff felt that this was met with conditions. They are delineating six parking spaces within the existing driveway with one shadow space. That could be installed if it was deemed necessary through a request to DCDP staff. We already, I already talked about the parking analysis because I took that out of order, but staff felt that this was a substantial decrease in the potential based on, at least the Watertown zoning ordinance. The, the remain, the remnant of the basement, which I wanted to just identify, and we have it in the staff report, would continue to be used as, no longer would be used as any kind of office, but it would be used as storage and utility space for the tenants within the building as a whole. There was some access down there, but it would be within the, within the foundations of the original building and would not be used as living space. So, the ordinance as a guideline requires 20%, or no, allows 20% of your parking to be shadow parking, and 20% of seven spaces is 1.4 spaces. So, staff believes that having the shadow space is an appropriate scenario, and believes that the, the way that the parking lot is configured, that it's not going to be a required addition to the site, and allows existing landscaping to be preserved. Criteria number four, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. Staff again felt this was met with conditions. The majority of the changes will reconfigure some of the building's interior space, but does not alter the exterior of the spa, of the house or structure. There's existing systems that will be reviewed, and any relevant building or other codes will be met as part of the renovation, so staff felt that that was appropriate. And so, with that, staff recommends conditional approval. There's a series of conditions. Between when we wrote the staff report and now, staff did have a conversation with Director Butter and talked about the existing driveway. It currently goes right up to the property line along the edge, and the parking is being proposed to be along that side. And so we discussed some scenarios where you could put, put a buffer between the first parking space for the commercial use and the driveway opening, and that that could help create, narrow down and more defined drive aisle into the site. So staff suggested, staff reviewed that and felt that that could help minimize any kind of a potential impact and create a safer environment at the sidewalk. As a caveat, I haven't talked to the petitioner about this, so I'm just, I'm going to read what I suggest. We suggest that it could be reasonable at the board's decision to request a condition that there's a physical buffer in front of the parking spaces where those, the two retail or commercial spaces are. With understanding that the drive aisle would be maintained at the sidewalk at a minimum of 10 feet, and the buffer would be approximately four feet deep, which is our approximate buffer between the sidewalk and the parking space, and 8.5 feet wide, which is the width of a standard parking space. So, we wanted to suggest that that would be an additional condition as part of moving this forward to the zoning board. I did go out to the site and confirm that the drive aisle would, it would not constrain the access point into the site to have that planting buffer, or a land, you know, a buffer of whatever sort is deemed appropriate in front of the parking spaces. Our other conditions are, are set in here. The control plans that have been submitted, landscaping plans, review for plan modification, and the reference to the onsite parking, and reference to the exterior alterations being subject to the Mount Auburn Street Historic District review. That's the staff's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have anything. Thank you.
Well, just one, that buffer you're talking about is where those two lower cars are.
Yes, so they've shown an area right here between the front, first car and the sidewalk, and that is the, that's the required buffer, but there's, it's just, it's just a buffer, but it doesn't, it's not designated as anything, it can be paved typically. But at the, at the, with the conversation with the butter, I, I understood that by having the drive aisle shifted on the, you know, defined as over to the other side, then it, those car, it makes the condition for those cars more awkward. They, they have to drive into the site and then get into those two parking spaces. They would end up most likely being further back, but we're not expecting that to be striped. They would end up having this, you know, either back into that area or some other sort, but that would be where the buffer would be.
So, let's understand this. So that buffer then is essentially a square piece of ground? Is that about what it is?
Yeah, it would, it would be four feet deep by eight and a half feet, so it's a rectangle.
Oh, okay.
It could be rounded, I mean, they, you know, I, I could clarify in the condition, or you can talk about how the condition would read so that it can be reviewed and approved as part of their landscape, it would just be an update to their, to their site plan. And so, you know, if you wanted a rounded edge, or if it was flush, so that it allowed, if it was for pervious purposes, it, you know, remains flush with the asphalt so that the water would flow into it instead of whatever. That's something you guys can provide guidance on. It was, it was just a clarification after talking.
Yeah, so it could be striped, it could be a striped buffer on a paved area, or it could be a vegetated area?
If, if you condition it that way, then that would, we talked about, right now, I suggested a physical buffer, so that could imply landscaping, landscape planters, as long as they're only three feet or lower. By suggesting a physical buffer, it would have to be something physical. So you could do the striping plus something physical.
Gotcha.
So that those cars can't just drive straight in.
Right, that's where I was getting at.
Okay, thank you. Any board questions on this?
I do, yeah, thank you. Question for, for Gideon, actually. Can you explain under what circumstances the shadow space would need to be constructed?
It's in the condition. If the town determines that it's required, so that would be based on if there was, say, a series of code complaints about parking that can be directly attributed to that commercial use of that part of the building, or to the, to the site. Or by the petitioner slash owner of the property, if they do a parking analysis and it's submitted and shows that they need it. So if they find that their use is actually requiring it, and they can show that it's, it's in demand, those are the two, those would be the two reasons to remove that and put in parking. It is, from the town's perspective, that would be the side yard. It does, it does have a, it's a street-facing side yard. In the town's ordinance, there's a front yard and a side yard. So, in, in theory, someone in, in any other side yard in a neighborhood, you can just apply for and have a parking space all, all along that area, as long as it complied with the code. So this, by having this condition in there, it limits it, and it can't just be converted without the town's review.
So town would have to review, they couldn't just go ahead and do it, like?
The only other comment I have is, so I see in the list of plans under Condition 1, all the floor plans, proposed planting plan, planting plan in detail. I don't see a site plan, though, that actually dimensions the parking spaces. And it seems to me that, when you go back to the history of this, a couple of years ago, that the order, was it the order to show cause about the parking, was all predicated on a parking plan that was not adequate, or it turned out to be incorrect? So, shouldn't there be a, a site plan as part of this package and required as a control document?
The, the, the proposed planting plan is labeled as a planting plan, but it's actually a planting and parking plan? So the, the header on that says proposed planting plan, sheet L01. It's based on the land survey. If you feel that we should have a condition that a proposed plot plan be submitted to confirm that the landscaping plan...
I, I feel like, even in previous applications, I feel like we've seen a, a site plan that actually had dimensioned parking spaces?
Can I address that for you? Can I address that?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yes, Andy Rojas, Rojas Design. There is, you're right, in the past, we had a surveyor do a parking plan that was a type of survey-type plan. And there's one that's been done, and we will present that to you, not today, but we have...
To the Z, to the zoning board?
To the ZBAA.
Yes, it's just like, it has the exact same information as the planting plan.
Yeah.
But in a survey parking.
Okay.
So if it pleases the board, they can submit that to staff, and we'll make sure that it's in the packet for the zoning board?
Yeah.
For, for their review, since this is a zoning board approval? Is that? And then we can verify, and if you move forward with condition, we can have them at least mark that up.
Right, could that be an added plan required as a controlled document?
Yeah, it could probably just be an update to this landscape plan?
I suppose, it's just, I'm, I'm not accustomed to seeing that information on a landscape plan?
The buffer, that, not the...
Oh, the buffer, yeah, yeah.
No, that's fine.
So, are there other comments, questions?
I, I have a couple. Just like, just so I can get this in my head, when we were here two months ago, to now, it is a net reduction of one unit, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. My question is, and that's, that's what the, the comments were, the public comments were about reducing the number of units, so, and here we are with that. So this proposal provides that. But I'm curious about the, the parking, just the change between February and where we are now. So I went back and I looked at the plan from February 19th, and it shows seven parking spaces. And we have the plants that are in front of us, and that shows seven parking spaces, yet we've reduced the units by one. So my question number one is, why hasn't the parking requirement decreased? Because the number of units has decreased?
Well, we're using our zoning ordinance, and in the zoning ordinance, three units triggers, it's a multifamily.
Okay.
And so it, a one-bedroom has a parking requirement, and a two-bedroom has a parking requirement. And so, the two one-bed, it was two one-bedrooms? No, before. Those had a lower level of parking per unit than two two-bedrooms, which...
Has a higher number.
So it's just like any two-family or other site in town, no matter how many bedrooms there are in a two-family, you shall have two parking spaces, unless there's like five bedrooms or more per unit, then you have three. So that's, that's why, even though the intensity from a unit perspective is less, it still requires the same number.
Okay, and I'm also curious on the, the land, landscape plan 01, and before, there was, where spots six and seven were on the backside of the, the building here, was listed as gla, grass block for parking. But we're not putting parking in there, I'm just wondering why we're still putting the, the grass block there?
It's a, it's, it's a note that's, continues to be there, that shouldn't be there.
So that's been, so that's been removed?
Because you wouldn't be using, that wouldn't be a patio that...
That way, there's no parking back there. And I think, Gideon, the last thing, on, on Condition 5, I think the previous, if I remember correctly, the previous submittal had a, had a number of L-labeled sheets. And this is saying L10, I think it should be L01.
Condition 5.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Board rest. Questions in the audience? Comments? Here, she's first, ladies first. Some semblance of civility.
Thank you. My name's Irene Santoro, and I live on Center Street. Just because I couldn't see the diagram very closely here, but I just wanted to double-check with all the parking that we're talking about. Is that taking place from the Franklin Street side? Or are we making an entrance from Mount Auburn Street side into the back of the building? So the parking lot, all the spaces we're talking about.
I can, I can speak, it's, I can speak to it, it's exactly where it is today, which is on Franklin Street. There is no opportunity to have any kind of driveway along Mount Auburn Street. So from the town's perspective, there's not a, a location along Mount Auburn to have a driveway.
Okay, great, thank you. And then also, I guess the present front door, is that the entrance for the second and third floor residence, residents? Or will that be the front door to the office? We're just trying to get an idea. And the side entrance will be the entrance to the residence on the first and basement floor?
Is it okay if I, um...
So the front door?
So, the, the site remains as, as is for the existing unit? So the front door, which is for the office, is also the front door for the residential unit? They also have a rear door on the parking lot side that will be inset, it'll continue to be, they're proposing to remove a portion, and it'll be inset where it would have been originally. And so that unit, which is on the second and third floor, have two access points, and they're remaining where they are. The other unit, the primary, and I guess the, there's a existing doorway near the condos, that is the access point for that unit, and that's where their main door would be. And then there's a second egress on the driveway side? It's just that, because of the windows? Yeah, so that's it. So no, no, there's no new doorways being proposed on the site, and they would be using the doors that are there.
So there's only one entrance to the commercial side? There's only one entrance?
It's the original door, the historic door into the... It's the original door, the historic door into the, and that's shared.
I see, okay.
Here's a diagram. The yellow is the shared area for the second-floor unit and for the office spaces. The office is broken into two areas because of that common area, which is where the, you know, original stairwell would, you know, in the Victorian. And so that's inside, under the porch, that yellow area. And I can show you. There's, there's an elevation of it. It's hard to, they're flat, so it's. Such exactly the way it is today.
Okay, front entrance? The entrance will take you into the residential area as well as the commercial area. That's what you're saying, is that what you're saying?
That's.
The front door, tell me again, please?
Yeah.
Your front entrance?
Residential.
Let's just go for the second and third-floor residential.
It's for the first floor, the basement residential.
No, 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 no. Let's let the architects clarify this.
There, the two existing units, one is commercial on the first floor, and one is residential on the second and third, those entrances don't change at all. And they both enter on Mount Auburn Street into a common lobby, that then the office can go onto their first floor, and the residential can go upstairs from that common lobby. Those entrances don't change at all. The new piece, which is in that diagram, kind of that pinkish piece up top there, has an existing little stair and entrance on the side near the condos, that will remain, it will be rebuilt in the same place, but it will remain as the main entrance to the new residential unit. Thank you.
I'm Bob Lawrence, so I'm at 260 Mount Auburn, which is quite up the street a little bit.
Last time I looked at the garage, it was gone down. It's my first time. I don't remember being in the garage. Is there a reason why you would, it seems like it makes parking even more difficult?
Is this your question? A budget?
Can you go up to the, if you have some?
Originally, the garage was going to come down because it was going to be a commercial unit. We actually had it with a turnaround, so cars can leave facing forward, but now it's going to be residential, so residential garage is more appropriate. They have to have a designated parking spot, because we don't want them parking on Franklin Street, so they'll know that those are their designated spots, so.
Wasn't parking before the three, three residences?
No.
Wasn't there a proposal for three residences?
That was the second proposal.
And that's not where that parking, like that tandem on the side?
That is not when that came, that's not when it started, no. It was a, it was a carryover from the first approval.
And it is going to be, I am going to fix up the garage, of course, so it's not going to stay that way.
Can you park in that?
Oh, yeah. I'm going to just fix it up a little bit, I don't know if I even have to come back for permits, but whatever I have to do when I get back on my feet again, I'll kind of fix it up a little bit.
Do you keep the garage door, or do you take it out if you're sticking out the garage?
Well, it's sticking out of the garage, so probably take the garage door off for now, because it kind of needs a new garage door, so I'm not exactly sure what to do right now with that door, but yeah.
So, anyone else?
And as far as, I just heard about the buffer thing today, so my feeling about it is, you know, I, obviously you guys see how much I've tried to, you know, do what the, you know, neighborhood has wanted, and I'm just looking forward to the day when I can actually, you know, treat the place like it's actually mine and do my thing with it. But the buffer thing, I'm totally fine with, as a matter of fact, I do have the documents with the surveyor stamp on it, and we actually did add, he actually gave space further from the street and also off of, on these ones, it shows the cars right up against. My new plan, the certified plan, it shows that there is space off of that line, because we didn't want it so far up against.
Yeah.
So we're already kind of, we're not kind of, but we're already aware of that, and we're, you know, we understand that's an issue. But my, my opinion for the, for the buffer thing is, I'm willing to do, again, I've done many things, I've already shown that I'm willing to do things, just for some kind of resolution here, but having a solid object in the driveway, because I know one of the concerns was the in-and-out and kids and all that, I don't see how having a structure basically obstructing a car is going to improve the safety or do anything other than make it more difficult to go in and out. So I would propose to do a buffer, but maybe we can do it like Gideon had said originally, maybe kind of paint it out and just kind of make it distinct, because I am going to stripe the parking, so everyone has their spots, because I definitely don't want anyone parking on Franklin Street. So everyone has a spot to park in, you know, on my property, so that's my only thing, so thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see you all again.
Well, you bring your water up, that's a bad sign, I think.
I've been really sick, so.
So hopefully you make this brief tonight.
I'll try. Steve's not here to tell me not to talk about legal issues, but I won't talk about them anyway. Anyway, my name is Jonathan Block, I live at 9 Franklin Street, which is directly abutting the property. I have to admit that the current application is certainly a step in the right direction. It's much better than we've seen before. However, it still has some flaws, and I think until some modifications are made to it, I really can't get behind it and I can't support it. But before going into any details, I just need to comment in a minute about the nature of the relief requested. Town staff has told me many times that Watertown does not grant use variances. I'm going to assume that that's true, and therefore, the petitioner, regardless of reason, if he's unable to obtain relief by this special permit, the only remaining option may be compliance with the WZO. If all the stakeholders here, and by that I mean town staff, the planning board, the zoning board, the petitioner, of course, and the entire neighborhood fail to work together, it could very well prove fatal to the petitioners obtaining any zoning relief at all. So let's just try to work together and avoid that. I'm sure, as you all know, you're, tonight, you're charged with making a recommendation to the zoning board. But not only do you have the right to make a recommendation, say, to approve it as submitted tonight, you have the right to recommend for approval with any changes or conditions that you may see fit. In fact, there's a long history regarding special permits, that planning boards do exactly that. So the first issue I want to bring up, just a little confusion I have with the plans, and I think maybe that can be quickly clarified. Could you bring up, I guess, LO-1 again? So there's a garage opening on there, and it shows two cars in it, and it's on the front side of the garage. So the opening is symmetrically located on the front side of the garage. See that? The cars are sort of placed around the center of the garage. So the width is not exactly specified, but it certainly seems large enough to fit two vehicles across, which is good. And you can see that parking spot one and two are located quite close to the main building. But on the other hand, and you could bring up, say, either EX-04 or AO-4, AO-4 is probably better. Yeah, oh four, that's great. So if you look on here, and this is the proposal of what's going to go in, the garage door is shown, I understand it could just be raised, but the garage opening on here is different from what's on the other plan, substantially different. So the opening of the garage here is about, I estimate it is about 14 and a half feet, I don't remember the exact number, I did measure it with the prior owner at one point. So let's just call it 14 and a half feet. The other plan has a garage opening of closer to almost 20 feet. The 20-foot opening supports two cars, as drawn. This one will not support the two spaces, just kind of wondering which plan is the correct plan right now, if someone could clarify that.
Can, I mean, can the architect?
Yeah, which one's correct?
I think like, maybe, maybe this is best done by a question and answer, so we can get to the end of this tonight.
Yes, no.
We propose there, there won't be a garage door. Obviously, the two cars don't fit inside fully, as shown on the, on LO-1, and the garage door is wider than is shown on AO-4. If you go there right now, the garage door is fully a two-car garage door. There's no guessing on it, go look at it. It's a two-car garage door, two cars have fit inside of it historically, and will continue to.
So this is a drafting error?
Yes.
That can be rectified?
Can I also just speak to, so I just went back to EX-04, they actually are, you know, they're removing a portion of the building, so you can't see that portion of the garage today, so that's part of, so there's.
That's part of it.
The garage is wider than a normal two-car garage as well, just based on this EX-04.
Okay, I mean. I'm not sure I understood the answer, but, so, which plan is correct? So, because, you know, it's very important for special permits.
LO-1.
LO-1, okay, so I, unfortunately. I don't know if I have a picture tonight, but EX-04 is a good example. So there's a protrusion from the main part of the building that has stairs in it, and I contend, and I'm assuming that some of you have visited the site, when you look down the driveway, you will see the protrusion, and it doesn't actually obscure the opening of the garage, because those plans are, although it's a flat picture, it's hard to show perspective. That's, I live next door, I have pictures on my phone, it's unfortunately too small.
Mr. Chair, if there's an issue with the opening of the garage, we could, this is one of the reasons the Historic District Commission's hearing hasn't been completed, so if, if there is a, if there's an issue with the width and it needs to be reviewed, I feel comfortable that we could suggest a condition that it be reviewed.
Yeah.
Prior to the Historic District Commission, so instead of.
Yes, we can't settle it here.
No, I don't want to settle it here, I just want to make the point, first of all, we need to have accurate plans, okay? One thing, we've gone through this over and over again, having to change plans, I'm all for that, I don't want this to come back again, week, month after month, because the plans are up. The second thing is, they're not demolishing the garage, which is their prerogative, but they got approval for it. They didn't get approval for, from the Historical Commission for the minor change of potentially widening it. I'm just going to suggest strongly that somehow you arrange a special meeting of the Historical Commission, if you're going to actually make the garage wider, to get approval prior to going in front of the ZBA, so we don't have to get pushed back. That is all.
We, we will not go before the Historic District Commission at this time, in my opinion, as a staff to the Historic District Commission, until we know that the use of the building is what is being reviewed, because each window, any changes, it's unlike a planning or zoning board, any change to the exterior needs their review. And so we, we don't want to have, they've been to the Historic District Commission several times, and we want to know what it is, so that they can clean up all the issues, if there are any.
Good.
And these plans were not intended to be control plans from, they're, they're not, they were not proposing to be changing this area of the, so just to clarify.
Gideon's certainly correct, however, given that this is a special permit, we need control plans, like this, that's not going to fly. So we can have a discussion here, and you can make a recommendation, again, based on anything you want, but going into the zoning board hearing, we don't have the control plans, and if any of those conditions, say, and this is, I guess, directed towards the legal council that's here, something like, the plans will be reviewed later, it will not pass as a special permit, it will be sent back if someone appeals it to the town. You can't do that. So just trying to make sure this works on the first trial, let's get it done, right? So just figure it out, which other plans are, and if you need to do something with a historical decision or not, just do it. I'm not objecting one way or the other, I'm just saying, let's have some set of clear plans by the time we get to the zoning board, so that we can get approval on this or not. It's the first thing. Moving along, I guess I'll start with the buffer. In all the prior iterations that have been before you, and before the zoning board, all of the recommended conditions had contained one that had to do with safety, specifically that the petitioner has to comply forever with a particular item in the zoning ordinance to do with safety with cars exiting in the driveway. That's because, as the property is now, and as it's proposed to be, cars entering and exiting, in this case, the spots that are marked for the real estate use, present a real safety hazard to both pedestrians and vehicles. The town has acknowledged that in documents on the record, and in prior decisions about this property. It hasn't changed in this one. We have to fix it, so we can avoid having the safety issue, and that's why I talked to the town to put a buffer in there, so that we do not have an active driveway that becomes a safety hazard in that area. I don't know what the exact solution will look like, does it have to be eight feet long, or can it be two feet long? Can it be a nice fluffy bush, or can it be whatever? It doesn't matter.
Sounds like that's being addressed, so.
That's being addressed, I'm just saying, I am the abutter who put that up, and I wanted to make clear, because it poses, in the town's own words, although Gideon may have checked.
Okay.
A safety hazard. I like to point out, so that is a condition that I would really like to see. Another condition I'd like to see is one that was also in all the other prior cases before this board, and it was in ZBA 2015-25, which was approved, which called for the restoration of the planting strip that was in the front, shouldn't use the front, but in the Franklin Street fronted side, on the sidewalk there on the Franklin Street. So on the property today, there is sidewalk that's cement, and it was continuous all the way to, up until the street. It is apparently very, very tempting for people to park on that sidewalk all the time, and it creates another hazard, which can be addressed and fixed, and which the petitioner had prior, under prior permits, had already agreed to address. And I'd like to see that condition also put back in.
Can we go to the site plan? So, so you're hoping that the granite curb get extended, is that it?
I'm not sure I heard you, did you say the curb get extended?
The granite curb?
Yeah, that would be great if one extends the granite curb. The town has said that, at least to myself and all my neighbor, like on my other side, that we would have to pay for granite curbs, said it would be great if the petitioner wanted to put in granite curbs, but I'm talking about removing the cement that is located normally where the plant, planting strip is?
Can I, can I, Mr. Chair, can I just speak to this a little bit? Everything that he's talking about right now is in the public right-of-way, and so the town had a policy that they would pave the planter strip in the past, so if someone wants to request that the asphalt be removed, if there is asphalt or concrete within that planter strip, the DPW will remove that. The road, when it is, when and if it has a full-depth reconstruction, they do put in a granite curb and define the planter strip, but again, that's the town's, town's right-of-way. In the past, with the original Pilates studio, we had suggested defining that edge, because it was a substantial change in the commercial use of the site. We do not require that with these residential conversions, so it's, it's up to you to decide if you want to make that recommendation to the zoning board. I just wanted to give you a little background on what he's referencing as far as the planter strip, and it's in the right-of-way, the sidewalk's part of the, it's all owned by the town, and it's not private property. He can't do that without the town's review and approval of it as well, so.
Do you want a picture?
We got it.
But Gideon, that can't be a condition of this approval, right? Because we'd be basically conditioning something that DPW would have to.
There's a way to frame it if you would like to make a recommendation, that they consider.
Gives you an edge there.
Requesting it. It would be per the town's review and approval, not, they can't just do it, or it would be a.
What the, how many more items are we talking about here? We spent a fair amount of time on this subject, so I'm trying to, you know, you've been at it for 20 minutes, so.
One more after this, I'll give another picture, and also clarify something for the record. So the other picture shows a whole bunch of cars, just to make my point about being tempted to parking in the lot.
And that day that I was taking, April 3rd, I don't know how many people called the police, but more than three people that I know, and the police came out at least three times. I'm not going to say that it's anybody who's using the property now who's doing that parking, that's not my point. The point is, that intersection, for whatever reason, is, remains a hazard, and if. The point is, that intersection, for whatever reason, is, remains a hazard, and if there's anything we can do to persuade people not to park so close to the intersection, it wouldn't make it safer for everybody. And not just myself and my other abutters, but also for the future residents, actually, 195. There's no reason why we, when, in prior permits, had found a way to put this in a condition, it had no mention in the condition of the commercial use. We couldn't find a way to put it in.
Now that, now that he references that, I, it's coming back to me that, um, as far as the no parking requirements, that is a Traffic Commission request, and that is not under, they, they certainly have no, um, ability to create no parking zones on the public right-of-way. We could suggest that they look at it, or we could sugge- anybody can make a request to the Traffic Commission to have an area designated, there's no parking if it's, and if it's deemed a dangerous situation where parking shouldn't be happening, then it, it would be signed appropriately within the town right of way.
Right. The, the background of this request, just to clarify, is not that. We, we've all made requests for parking. The Traffic Commission, I mean, the, the issue is, is that, so far as I recall, the DPW require that the residents, actually the owners, actually make the request to remove the cement that's there, not the neighbors, not everybody else in the neighborhood who wants it out, but actually the owners.
Yeah, we got the point.
Okay. Next condition I'd like to see there is, or a modification of the control documents, or I'm not sure how to word this, is to have the shadow parking go away. I don't need to get, I'm not gonna discuss the legal aspects of this at all to, with, 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 um, because of deference to Stephen, even though there's not really no reason to play that deference. The issue simply here is that it's unnecessary, it's unsightly, and it's just unwarranted to have that parking on that frontage. I certainly believe that the town's claimed justification for it, that it is not the front yard, will not hold up in court. That is not the point.
Just to be clear, we, we have that in there because of people who ask for more parking, not the opposite, so staff actually doesn't believe we need parking there, and that's why they said it could be a shadow parking, but if you believe that it's not necessary at all, it's, you can make that suggestion.
One of the things I, I wanna sort of refer to the staff report here. It is envisioned, at least, the belief is that the commercial users here who park on the site will not be there overnight.
Will not what?
Will not be parking on site overnight. I'm just gonna take that as a given, and the idea is that the property only really needs to support four parking spaces at night, not seven. And if that logic, which is in the staff report, is true, then giving the petitioner, and I'm gonna use a funny word here, the right to have people park on that front yard, I think is the wrong thing to do. Now, I know Gideon worded it as if they had the right to ask for it, but my understanding of the shadow parking is, if they do a parking analysis that claims that they need it, there is no subsequent ability for the town to object to said analysis. There's, there's nothing there. There's nothing for me to do as an abutter, there's no one else to do in the neighborhood and say, "I don't want you parking in front of one." They now effectively have got, gained the right to get that spot, and thereby cut down the tree if they feel like it, which is a beautiful tree, or, or to do whatever they feel like in that area, park more cars, actually.
Okay, next point.
No, that's it for now.
That's it.
Can I ask a question about that, that last one, though? I, if, I, I feel like there's two different motivations for, for your comments here, because if they take away the shadow space, but it turns out that they need it, then that extra car is gonna be parking on the street. So, which do you prefer? Do you prefer that, that that extra person parks on the street, or on, in a shadow space on your abutter's property?
So, that's a great question. I have hundreds of pictures at home, which is the answer to that question, which I didn't, I don't wanna bring in. The current users, which is the realis- the commercial real estate, the other two prop- that things are vacant, generally use the street. The prior commercial users of tho- of that spot, with the exception of one car, use the street. They've been using the street, and we can't stop it, and I'm gonna assume, and I've talked to a number of the people who are parking there, it's because they don't like the parking conditions. They, they generally, especially the real estate agents, they're going in and out, they don't wanna spend a lot of time parking their car if they're gonna go leave again. I mean, you can ask them, this is my, this is hearsay, I talked to them about it, but I don't know that this, you'd have to get it from them. So, they just parked the car up on the curb, they go in, and then they go out, I've seen them do this. No amount of whatever is getting in the park in there now, and especially because the one, at least one of the residences' cars is, tends to be there during the day. I would say half the days it's in there. So, that makes it kinda hard for them to get the cars in and out, as it is now, and they have trouble, and I see them smashing their doors into my landscaping, I see them struggling getting in and out and park their car. In the winter, it's just first, so if they don't need to, they don't do it. And that's, that's unfortunately the answer. I would rather they park in there, but I can't get them to do it, so I give up.
Fine, okay, thank you. So, are there other comments from other folks present? Sir?
Just one quick one, just to, I was saying again about the buffer that came up earlier, that, you know, if you put something that's gonna be more of an impediment to someone using it, which he just said, how they aren't using it, that's only gonna guarantee it. So, again, I just really wanna consider if we do wanna put a buffer, that it's not an obstacle to people coming in and out, that's all, just, just so it actually works in the way.
So, no other comments? Let's think about this. Uh, do we wanna put on a few, uh, extra comments here? I, I'm not a great fan of this shadow parking, uh, I mean, your, your car is three feet from the building, I mean, you wouldn't allow that anywhere else, so why do it here? I think we should not, we should encourage that not to happen.
Agreed.
Are there other things we wanna say?
Well, one observation I have, which is related to, to the issues, is that it looks, and correct me if I'm misunderstanding the drawings, but I heard that there was nothing happening on the outside except replacement of windows, but it looks like that whole entry stairway is being moved internal to the building footprint. Is that right?
On the rear, it is.
On the driveway side, is what I'm typing.
On the driveway side, that stair that currently sticks out is being removed, and, uh, and this was required, you might have been smart, maybe it was...
Yeah, no, it's, it's fine, I just wanna make sure I understood, it wasn't...
Sorry, I forgot about that.
What about all the conditions that have been proposed? Is it appropriate for them to be on our, on our ruling for the night, our recommendation?
Yes.
If you wanna, whatever conditions we wanna add, I would say that ideally somebody will formulate one about the shadow parking, and are there others we wanna make?
We had the, but considering the buffer, and then it was for review by the town, the physical buffer that came up today.
Yeah.
That was one potential one.
Um, did we wanna add to the control documents that the, um, site plan would give the, um, dimensions of the parking?
Dimension of the park, yes.
So, who's gonna formulate the, well, can we get a motion going, and then we can put on a few, uh...
Can, can you, um, have you already, um, do you have a clear language for the, sorry to interrupt, um, do you have the clear language for what the conditions are gonna be before you make the motion?
No.
That way, that way we can, I, I have clear guidance
Okay.
to put in the report to the zoning board, if you're gonna change, if you're modifying conditions, you can identify it, then make the motion, and that way we can, um, if, you can do it either way, you can make the motion and then discuss it, but I, I just wanted to clarify it.
Well, the, the motion would be to recommend conditional approval, and then we could say with the addition of the following conditions?
Yes, which are?
So, it might be better to discuss it first, that way you can make sure the condition...
We'll make our motion, and they can deal with it, so, so...
Okay, well, I move that the planning board recommend to the ZBA conditional approval of the requested special permit under section five point oh one point one B and C, and sections nine point oh four and nine point oh five, as it meets the criteria in the zoning ordinance.
With it?
With the additional, with the addition of the following conditions.
I would say one to eliminate the shadow parking. Are there others?
Uh, there was consideration of the, to, uh, provide a plan for a physical buffer for review by the town, uh, on the, at the Franklin Street end of the driveway.
And to, um, include a plan that mentions all the parking spaces and driveways.
Okay.
Can I add, and the garage?
What was that, Ed?
And the garage?
Yeah.
'Cause that would address the discrepancy that somebody brought up.
And I think the point about it going to the Historic District Commission is already covered, um, under condition six, about exterior alterations.
So, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Could I just ask a clarification? Is this, this is a new petition? Gideon, the one in February was withdrawn.
This is a brand-new planning, special permit.
So, all in favor? Was there a second?
I did.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good.